Good morning, everyone. Sorry about that. Just the board requests that all audience members be respectful to others by not whispering or having conversations during the meeting. This will allow everyone, including our minute taker, to hear what is being discussed by the board and other participants. Sound travels easily with the approved six and obviously with the AC in this room and a background noise makes it more difficult to hear. Okay? Thank you. We're going to start by, and obviously as a lot of you know, Sonny is not here due to philosophy son. John, I'm not sure, I haven't heard from him, but just wanted to, I'm sure you probably all know that Rip, who worked for the town for ever. I'm not sure. Nineteen years. Retired about a year or so ago, two years ago, and obviously passed away Friday at the age of sixty-two, which is scary. And if someone has not seen, there will be a burial Saturday at twelve-thirty at Bayside in here, just if anyone is unaware or is entrusted. We're going to start by the review of our minutes. We'll start with the public hearing that was held on Wednesday, July 2nd at six o'clock. Here, could I have a motion?
Thank you.
A second?
No second.
On favor?
Aye.
And then we also have minutes of non-public meeting held on July 2nd at five o'clock here also. Motion?
Aye.
Second?
No second.
On favor? Aye. I watch you. Would you like to start? Yes. So we have invited members from DES and the WRDPs. We have Sharon McMillan and Renee, are you here?
Great.
Renee?
Haven't seen you in a while.
Hi, Renee. Good morning.
Good morning, and thank you for letting us participate in the meeting.
Sure.
My name is Sharon McMillan. I'm the Bureau Administrator, Program Director for the Saki River Basin.
All right, can you speak up just a little bit?
Oh.
The air conditioner is very loud. And that's not a microphone for the room.
It is not. Okay. All right.
This is our team's meeting at the Asylum Booth. My name is Sharon McMillan. I'm the Saki River Basin Program, Environmental Program Administrator. So I'm a Bureau Administrator with Department of Environmental Services. And as we'll show on our presentation, the Saki River Basin Program is the regional wastewater system that serves ten communities, including Belmont.
Renee, hello, here. I'm the Director of the Water Division of DES and have been there for many moons.
Is there a screen advance or do you want to do that for us? That is me. Oh, I see the TV now. So the next slide just shows our geographic reach. Go back one please. Actually, maybe easier, I do have pockets of this, they're black and white, so they're not really pretty. So. I apologize, I don't have enough for the audience. But Alicia doesn't have a copy of the presentation. She wants to share that, that is certainly up to her. The one at the Saki River Basin Program, by way of background, was created back in nineteen seventy-two at the beginning of the Clean Water Act as part of the effort to clean up the lakes and rivers in central New Hampshire. Obviously, the Clean Water Act affects everything nationwide, but we were sort of a trial to make sure that a region including a combination of larger cities and small towns could be included and make sure that the wastewater treatment was effective and available. Back at the inception of the program, the facilities were constructed primarily with federal funding with a five percent state match and a five percent local match. Obviously, times have changed since then. Ninety-five percent federal money is largely unavailable. There are some grants and loans available, but not to typically build entire wastewater treatment plants. So, next slide please. So as you'll see, our, it did not. Oh, there it did. It was just snow. As you can see, our service area runs all the way up to Center Harbor, Moltenboro, across to Guilford, and then our wastewater treatment plant here. It's sort of at the end of the giant Y down in Frank. So you'll hear of the words Franklin Wastewater Treatment Plant. It's not a city facility, it is our facility that is the state-owned facility. So we have fourteen pumping stations, fifty-seven miles, which is the red lines on this map, which we call regional intercept. So it's a combination of pressure sewers, gravity sewers, but we do not owner-maintain the actual municipal sewers, the collection systems that bring it to these main trunk lines that we call intercept. Next slide please. So, what is our relationship of state-owned facility with the communities? We call them member communities under statute RSA forty-five, forty-five to fifty-four. The state established the system of relationship with the member communities. And what this is, is something happened, but we'll travel along. The member communities, what we do is we assess the member communities for the cost of service, for out-of-hand debt service, et cetera, and then it is each up to each municipality or sewer district or mission to then bill their community members. So each community has their own rate structure. Part of that is our assessments to each of the members. So in effect, we only bill ten people. We bill the ten communities, and then each community or member then goes and bills their communities for not only their costs, for their sewer collection systems, pump stations, pipelines, et cetera, personnel, but then part of that is also our assessment. So that's sort of the relationship. Going back to the state level, I could go on for another thirty minutes, but I will try to keep this a little bit streamlined. Our prioritized needs are included in state budgets. Since we're a part of a state agency, part of Department of Environmental Services, our budgets are funding our rules, regs of how we spin things, when we spin things, how we do contracting is governed by the state rules. So we go through the biennial budget process at the state level. So we just got a new state budget for our operating budget, also for our capital expenditure budget. All those are approved by the legislature, then the governor, and then they become our budget. So luckily, the governor signed the operating budget, of which we were a part for DES. So as part of that state budget, which is about nine million dollars for each of the two years of the biennium, we have prioritized needs, which are those costs, just overhead costs, electricity, personnel, you know, groundskeeping, you know, things to keep the doors open. And then we also, every year, go through and we make sure that we have an operating and maintenance budget to keep the infrastructure running proper. So we have a variety of pumps, control systems, motor control centers, electrical gear, et cetera. So in this particular biennium, some of the things that were what we call prioritized needs, which were a little bit above and beyond what we would normally think is over to keep doors open, is the increase in our electricity. Luckily, it's modulated a little bit, it was escalating quite a bit, but it's still a significant portion of our budget. Fuel oil, biosolids, which is the solids byproduct that we generate from the wastewater treatment process. We have to take that off-site now and landfill it, and I'll get into that a little bit. Plus, the chemicals we use for actually de-watering that material to make it a solid so that we can landfill it. We're also in the process of doing fire alarm retrofits across all of our facilities. So that's the fourteen pump stations, our shop, and the wastewater treatment plant. And if you've never been to a wastewater treatment plant, it's quite extensive. There are not only buildings, but there are tanks, we have tunnels underground, we have about nine outbuildings with various process controls, electrical, et cetera, in them pumps. So it's quite complex, and I invite anybody that's interested to come give us a visit, and we can walk through the facility to give you some context. We do tank cleaning and painting. Some of our tanks are concrete, some of them are concrete with metal covers. So we have a variety of painting, sandblasting, cleanouts, et cetera. Clarifiers are exactly that. They take the raw wastewater, they actually let it settle out, and then they have a metal apparatus to skim off oil and grease, which luckily we don't get a whole lot of, and materials at the bottom so that the water actually goes through a process of what is called aerobic treatment through a aeration tanks. And so this is a large part of where our electricity goes in. It's not just keeping the lights on in the buildings, we actually have to generate power aeration. We blow air into the tanks so that the biologic organisms can actually treat the wastewater that goes through secondary clarification and settling, and then goes through a UV disinfection system out to the Merrimack River for discharge. So right now, our discharge is about five to six million gallons a day. Our design is about double that at eleven and a half, but we have experienced over thirty-six million gallons a day as a peak flow in our system's design for that. So wanted to give you an idea of some of the things that were on the radar screen for this next budget that are in the operating budget. Next slide please. And some of the reasons for why we communicate with the communities and why we have the operating budget. This gives you a picture of some of the things that we ask communities to help us with. The top one, you can't really see what that is, we call it the giant white worm. This is what they call disposable wipes. It gets into the sewer system when you flush or commode and do these supposedly flushable wipes. They really are not flushable, it's like flushing a diaper. It may go down, but it's going to get caught someplace in our process. This is pulled out of a manhole quite close to here, it's about three manholes down from the bridge, down the way south, well, actually, on, close to the highway. It was pulled out, it's actually doubled in half. Took a crane and they split it in half, so think of how long that is. It was at least eighteen foot long. We had to use a crane truck, it was almost at the capacity of the crane truck, and it's just oil, grease, and these racks. So this is the sort of thing that we don't want in our system. We have to install extra grinders to try to get it so that it doesn't clog manholes and then have clogs that then create sewer overflows, backups in the pipe. When our pipes back up, these are the main forty-eight, sixty-inch pipes that are in your roadways, primarily, some are cross-country, but this is not a small backup. This is something where it is a major backup with a lot of sewer flow coming out to the environment, a lot of times in roadways or cross-country. The bottom-left picture is one of my staff members showing, it's hard to see, and if you're not mechanically oriented, this is what's called a impeller. So it's just really sort of a fan internal, and it's stainless steel, and the whole fin is broken off. And this is because of debris in the system. So it's not just the white worms, what we get under the rocks, gravels, heck, we've had cinder blocks thrown in, and we have enough flow that it actually comes down and gets into our stations and damages our equipment. Then we have the grinders, which are supposed to be grinding up maybe just the disposable wipes, but in effect, it's all the debris, the rocks, gravels, whatever else comes down, there are grinders with teeth, and you can see that the teeth are missing at about the third level up. So all of these are things that we have to routinely maintain. Just the teeth section of that particular grinder is twenty-eight thousand dollars. And that doesn't include the labor to pull the grinder out, put it back in, send to that. So we ask all the community to try to make sure they have strong sewer use ordinances, and try to educate their population that there are consequences to some of the things that people can hopefully easily prevent. You know, don't flush something that you wouldn't want clogging your own drain, no oils, fats, greases, no disposable wipes, diapers, cloth towels, we get it all, and because it adds to everybody's bill. So the next slide please. So this shows a little bit of how we have value for the community. In the last four or five years, we've gone up from two-tenths of a penny per gallon treated to three-tenths of a penny per gallon treated, and we treat over two-point-four billion gallons of wastewater a year. So we do a lot of processing of water and wastewater, and part of that, and another thing that communities can always help us with, is what is called infiltration and inflow. We shortened that to II, so as you may have heard this. We want to process wastewater. We don't want to process rainwater, groundwater, cool water, you know, irrigation water, any of that, that's really not wastewater. And again, that three-tenths of a penny, you keep adding hundreds of thousands of gallons where you shouldn't really be having it go through the treatment plant and the pump stations, it just adds to everyone's cost. So trying to eliminate leaking pipes, poorly seeded manholes, you know, putting inappropriate things like cool water or something down the sewer is really counterproductive for us because we're going to treat it like it was wastewater, because we can't segregate it out. Stormwater is supposed to be separated, so, what's called a separated system, so the stormwater drains are not supposed to go into our system, so sump pumps, roof drains, you know, those sorts of things are not supposed to be connected to our sewer, they're supposed to be connected into the storms. Next. Okay. Okay. So some of the things that we try to do to minimize costs and offset things is we have done multiple grants and awards to do energy reduction after personnel. Power is our second largest expense. We've tried over the past decade to reduce our power. So in the last fifteen years, we've reduced our power consumption by over fifty-five percent. We still have a heck of a bill, it's always, there's always going to be a bill, and we're always going to be subject to whatever ever source, ever sources across all of our facilities are electric utility. So whatever their rates are, as negotiated through the state, through state agencies, so luckily, we get a better rate than residential rates without as much fluctuation, but we also try to minimize that cost. Plus, we've been able to secure over two million dollars in grants and other incentives for, through the Clean Water revolving loan fund, through the ARCA grants previously, through the Obama-era era grants. So we try to go after outside funding whenever we can to help offset the member communities' assessments. A little bit of context, I updated this with the latest, which was the twenty-twenty-four Sewer Rate Dashboard. This is a survey done by DES for water and sewer rates across the state. The average annual sewer rate across the state is seven-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars a year. I've done the member communities that have rates on that dashboard, which include Belmont, Bay District, Franklin, Guilford, LeFuneau, Meredith, and Tilton. And the Belmont sewer rate was under their auspices, was a little less than three hundred dollars. And again, this is for the survey that you guys reported in, so I know you've got different rate structures for different people, but it was the lowest of the member communities reported into the dashboard. The next slide just shows what a value in general wastewater is compared to some of the other commodities that most people enjoy as part of their daily living. This is a comparison that we ran showing things like electricity, internet TV, cellular and sewer. So the bottom line is the sewer with statewide average sixty-one dollars a month, the statewide average rolled up to seven-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars a year. Belmont's, as I mentioned, according to this dashboard, was twenty-three dollars a year. So well under the statewide average, but you can see that sewer itself is compared to some of the other things that people typically spend on a monthly basis, is a very good commodity, very cost-effective commodity. Okay, switching gears to our capital projects, we have, in addition to our prioritized needs, we have requested through the state budgeting process some capital funding over the next biennium, so this would be through fiscal twenty-seven, which is June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-seven. So in that range, we have a requested budget. Now, this is not a commitment to spend this money, but if you're familiar with the state budgets, if you don't have money in a budget someplace, you can't buy anything or you can't contract anything, so it's not an obligation to actually spend this money, but if you don't have a funding source that is approved by the legislature and governor, you can't move forward even with a portion of this. So people get worried when they say, oh my goodness, you've got, you know, seventeen million dollars of capital budget. That's not saying we're obligated to spend that, but we have projects that roll up into our needs to equal that, and if we don't have all or part of that approved at the state level, we don't get to proceed with any part of it, well, we don't get to proceed with projects exceeding that amount. So some of the things that we are already embarked on, that we actually have grants and loan funding for, is replacement of our emergency generators at nine of our pump stations. As you recall, we have fourteen pump stations, but we identified nine where we need replacement generators. The generators at these pump stations are all original circa nineteen seventy-nine, eighty generators. So they're all old, past their remaining useful life, and because we got some of the outside funding, we'll be able to do low-interest-rate loans with some Brent forgiveness. We're also doing a SCADA cybersecurity telemetry upgrade, for those of you that aren't familiar with SCADA, it stands for Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition. It's a random word for how we monitor remotely our facilities. So we're not planned twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five, most facilities aren't anymore. We actually have people that are on-call after hours, that they take a laptop and they can view all the alarms, all the conditions, they can start and stop pumps, they can do a lot of things remotely. That SCADA system was last upgraded in nineteen ninety-two, so technology has changed, operating systems have changed, it's in need of a refresh. So we're doing that, making sure that we have good cybersecurity controls, and also we have our primary communication is actually radio telemetry. We've got a repeater on Belnet Mountain that's backed up with old-fashioned dial-up telephones, and in some cases, well, it's dial-up telephone or radio right now, we're looking at a secondary cellular as part of the separate. But as many of you are aware, a lot of the, over the airways, whether it's cellular, satellite, or radio, is affected by atmospheric, and that's why we always have the old-school landline wired communication for alarms. We also have solid handling processes. I mentioned that one of our major costs was the disposal of our solids byproduct, which is called biosolids. We try to minimize that cost and make sure that we're cost-effective in what we produce and how we produce it. So we're doing some solid handling upgrade, again, this is all at the treatment plant now, where we're doing this so that we can actually make sure that we have modern technology to get to a point that we'll be able to dispose of the material in the future. We have some underutilized and failing buildings at the wastewater treatment plant, some concrete spalling, some facade work, and some underused spaces, which we can actually repurpose for things like the storage. So we're looking at doing that, and we've got some outside funding for that. As you know, the things with the two little stars at the end, we actually have outside funding for all of the majority of that project. We're also doing roof replacements, we just finished with the roof replacements at the main building and the seven outbuildings at the wastewater treatment plant. The next, we're going to be doing our pump stations. Again, these are all original roofs, so some of them are flat ballasted roofs that we're going to put membrane roofs on, and some are key roofs that were going to be captive metal, and that's going to be done over this next year. And then, last one, but not the least one on this list, is Belmont Force Main, that I've got a few slides to discuss that. The next one, I will read through all of this, it's just more capital projects, and these are the ones where not all of them, they're primarily planning. In other words, you're going to do planning evaluations to be able, and some of the preliminary design alternatives analysis, to move forward with potentially a capital project in the future, or to do the actual, whatever was recommended in the master plan and the alternative analysis. So even though you may see two million dollars or seven million dollars or whatever, that's the estimate of the final project, not the master plan. You know, the master plan is going to inform that. The master plans also include the EPA mandated climate adaptation plan that is due next June, that everybody with wastewater treatment infrastructure has to make sure that they've identified any vulnerabilities, and then report that to EPA as how they might mitigate, whether it's flood or storm or whatever it is, so that the infrastructure can be part and in operation. All right, so let's move on to the Belmont Force Main project. First of all, I've thrown a lot of information at you, that's sort of the first half of the presentation. Were there any questions that you had at this point? People waiting here. Okay, thank you. The Belmont Force Main project, sort of an overview. This is the Force Main, and a Force Main is really just the pressure pipe, comes from a pump station, so just as a lift station or something at a condo development. You have to push uphill and get to the next gravity where then the wastewater can flow via gravity to the next high point. So that's why we have pump stations, is really as topography. You got to get it over the hills, then it flows downhill naturally until the next hill, and then you've got to repump it. So the Belmont pump station is over on South Road, it's a WRDP pump station, so it really serves the village here, plus Soderbrook, I guess there is R D's and then that particular development that's actually in Marfield. Those are the only inputs into that pump station. That pump station then uses this pressure pipe to go cross-country, goes all the way to Route one forty, and then goes along the Route one forty right away in the southern side, all the way into Tilton, past the Holiday Inn and the river crossing until it actually hits the gravel. So it's two and a half miles of this pressure sewer. It's what's called ductile iron, in other words, it's metal pipe in the ground, and so this particular pipeline is what has been failing and that we're talking about having to do some rehabilitation work. So we worked with an engineer, and why don't you go ahead to the next one? I think the picture is easier to look at, even though it's small. So we worked with an engineer for alternatives, because as you can see, they divided it up into segments. So each of those white bubbles shows a different segment. So there are three river crossings, there's the cross-country section, so on the very far right bottom at the bubble, that's the pump station, then it goes cross-country through the purple area, so it goes cross-country, goes through a river crossing up until Route one forty, then it goes along the south side of Route one forty until the next. Then it goes along the south side of Route one forty until the next river crossing, which is actually a culvert instead of below the river. All the way down to right out front of the Holiday Inn and another river crossing under the river. And then to the last, or the first gravity manhole where then it'll go down to the treatment plant by gravity. So I guess the good news is there's only one pump station, so it pumps. And once it hits that main line out by the highway, goes runs by gravity all the way to France. So it doesn't have to be repumped, so the topography is good once you get past this area. So the engineer looked at all of this and they came up with eight different combinations of what are you going to do with each of those segments? What's the most feasible? And you have to realize that this particular graphic shows where the wetlands are. So you have areas where they're in wetlands, you have the river crossing, et cetera. So what you might do in one area where there's no wetlands, she may, it may not be the best alternative, both from constructability and cost and everything else in another section. So the engineer put this together and they overlaid the wetlands and the water forces. So the blue is where the water is, the purple is the wetlands. On the next slide, they overlaid local water supplies. So the blue circles are public waters. The red dots, which are hard to see, but they're the darker ones, are private wells. Obviously, the blue is still the water and the light blue is the water pipeline along Route one forty serving. So this is Tilton Northfield Lachford Water System. And one of the blue circles, actually three of the blue circles, they're sort of the beginning of that pipeline in the middle, are their wells. And they're to the south side of Route one forty. Also in this area, and it's not shown because it got sort of covered up, is Liberty Gas. Toward the Tilton end has their big distribution station. And the pipeline crosses Route one forty and right close to where the Holiday Inn is down in that area, there's a gas pipeline on the south side of the road. So most of it's on the north side, but then it does cross and go on the south. So this brings up a lot of reasons of why there are some concern with this pipeline. One, we've had the black bubbles are the five breaches that we've had in this pipeline over the past four years. And this is concerning and it is not unique to this pipeline or this area. When the WRDP was first constructed, they used this ductile iron metal pipe for the majority of these pressure pipes, these force mains. So there are these pressure pipes in eight of the nine communities, because that's the material they used. The problem that has been occurring in Guilford and Meredith and here have been corrosion from the outside of those pipes. Creating holes and because this is a pressure pipe, think of this as a hole in your garden hose. It may not be a whole heck of a lot of flow, but a tiny hole is going to create a geyser. So it undermines, you know, it daylights, it goes through whatever soil, whatever road, creates symptoms, you know, gets out into the environment. So these holes, even though some of them are just the size of a fist, you know, the size of a football. Because this is a pressure pipe, it will very quickly scour all the soil away and create a sinkhole. And the wastewater will come to the surface and disperse out across. So of concern is the fact that these sewer overflows have been fairly local, because they're on the south side of the road to public water supplies. To wetlands, which means that because of the groundwater and the local to the wetlands can get and disperse across a wider area. So this was one of the reasons why we were prioritizing these pipelines. Because even though we repair and do spot repairs and we look and we go, you know, ten foot on either side and we look at it and say it's fine. You know, six months later, you know, two hundred feet away, you get another preparation. So what we, where we are now is the last, well, second last. Is we're working with, with Tilton and their engineer and their contractors. And I believe later this month, Underwood engineer who's working on behalf of the town is going to be doing some test pitting. And what they're going to be doing is they're going to be digging down, exposing the pipe and then looking. And they have a subcontractor to look and see if they can determine thickness of the pipe to help us determine condition. They're doing it all along the length in the different kinds of soil conditions, kinds of areas. And hopefully that will continue to inform some of the decisions as to what needs to be done and planned. Just so you know, our engineer, for a variety of reasons, which at least right now we're concurring with, is recommended doing the whole thing as one project. One, because of cost, you have multiple deployment, you end up adding cost and if you diverse things, you end up with inflationary costs also. And our utility world is always more expensive to do two projects than one, just deployment and everything else. And the other is the risk involved of not doing an area and then having to go back and then start doing emergency responses. Excuse me. So the first phase of this or the complete hundred percent phase was estimated at about nine million dollars. If you split it in two phases, where they wanted it split is not doing the last four bubbles on the left. And there are a variety of reasons for that. It's the, what they're proposing is an approach of lining and some doing adding new pipe, in other words, exposing the pipeline where it is and actually putting new plastic pipe right next to the pipe that's in there. And then when they tie it over, just leaving in place, filling and leaving in place the old pipe. And that was their recommendation. So when you see something like alternative eight, it's a combination of doing this, lining the segments going under the river. Doing lining and some like on the cross country areas, because there's no traffic, dig that trench, put the H T P E piping in, you can do that. Put it in the same, pretty much in the same trench as the existing pipe. Because a majority of this cost, again, this is a pressure pipe, you can't just turn it off. The material is going to get into that pump station. Now, what do you do with it when you can't use that pipe? So you have to set up a bypass, in this case, a bypass pipeline to one pasture construction area, tie into wherever you need to tie in. Have enough pressure valving, whatever extra to get it so that it doesn't back up the wrong way or overflow into the environment. So you have to do bypass pump. So this is a major expense when you're talking about repairing this kind of pipe. It's not like a gravity pipeline where you can say, I'm going to do from this manhole to this manhole and I'm just going to run a pipe or run a hauler, you know, septic hauler. And just bypass that for a short period of time when I either install a line or fix a line between in a grab and sewer. So that is really what adds to the cost of this is because it's a very long, it's two and a half miles for the whole thing bypass. It's just short of two miles if you break it into the two segments. And if it's broken into two phases, the first phase, cross country up to where they want to end is about five point seven million. And then if you wait like five years, the second one is six point three. So suddenly you add almost two million dollars to the project, just based upon construction. So to end on a high note, I just want to, on the next slide, go through.
Do you think we can just get some of the questions?
Okay.
Have any?
Yeah, yep.
And then maybe at the end you can add the dirt.
Okay, alright, yep, the time is yours.
I go, sure. Why would, with knowing that we have an issue with that pipe, evidently where you would be here? Why would the state issue a driveway permit right over that pipe allow construction on a piece of property right down here on one forty? Right where, and if you follow this one beside river based project, which I did a hundred years ago and started Plymouth and came down to, it's a senior class project. We know we got a problem, yet the state just issued a driveway permit with heavy equipment going over that same pipe. Why in the world would we do that now? Why would the state condone it? It seems to me like the right hand has nothing left hand is doing. That's number one. Number two. If you follow the pipeline from Plymouth down anywhere near any water, cumulative water that's encased in cement. Go down, look at, from the corner here down, follow the lake, follow the railway tracks, that big cement blocks that go along the lake, that's when the sewer pipe is. Why wouldn't we ramp this swamp, if you want to, or underground rivers been there as long as this country's been? They just went right through it, dropped it right in the slot. The third thing is state has encouraged this and done a lot of studying about one forty being the east west island. Because they've had to figure a way to get around Belmont and around Gilford for years. The traffic, the heavy construction equipment, they, it's just like a bowl full of gel, the road just shakes with the sun. But I don't think any of this has been taken into consideration when the original pipe was put in. And I think the fault lies a lot, whoever engineered this to stop. Anywhere there's water, you can go to Plymouth and follow that pipeline all the way down, anywhere where the ground was wet, it's encased, but not on one forty.
Nowhere in our system is it encased, except when it is suspended under a bridge. And I'm not saying you're not right, that they shouldn't have designed it differently, but we can't go back fifty years and redesign what's in the range. It was the engineering practice at the time, we're not the only ones. Other facilities across the state and across the region are experiencing the same thing. Where they, the material of the day was ductile iron, typically cement lined ductile iron. But once you get the outer metal on, the cement goes very quickly, very coarse and it will perforate. That was the material of the time. Sadly, you know, advanced fifty years, now we have things like H T P E that can handle the pressure and this sort of thing. But that plastics, that kind of plastic was not the material of construction of the day back when the program was installed. I mean, I wish I had had a crystal ball and I wish I still had a crystal ball as to, you know, what might be down the pipe fifty years from now. All we can do is make decisions where we are now as to how we can help mitigate what we have. Make the best decisions that we can, again, try to evaluate all the available technologies. And make the best decisions we can based upon that information. Yes.
Did the rate, you're doing that spitting on this pipeline?
No, and the reason they did not is because I mentioned that this was across the region, it's also across our facility. The same thing happened along the Guilford pipeline, Guilford Force Main along the lake. And I'd say the late eighties, early nineties. And they were experiencing the same thing. Multiple perforations from the outside of ductile iron and force main pipe, they went in, they did their spot repairs. And then they went in and they did a lengthier repair. They did soil borings to, you know, this was before we had the kind of technology where you could just get a map off the internet. They did soil borings to look at soil conditions. They did do test pitting and they said, yes, if you do this and span where it's bad, you should be good. So they spent about a billion dollars and they did a construction project and they replaced the pipeline in that force main. In a year and a half, about two hundred feet farther, actually it's farther upstream, the same thing started to happen. This is where they had done the borings and the test pits and the evaluations and everything and thought it was good soils. And they ended up having to go back and do yet another construction project and that was costing another about a million too. And that's in nineteen eighty dollars, so these were big projects. So my concern is, and when I say best available information. We can and we have dug up and we've looked at it and we said, even on these spot repairs, yeah, it looks good. We look at it and we span the excavation because we're there, we look at it and say, I think we're good. We've been wrong, those engineers back in the eighties were wrong. I don't know what the test pitting that's, is going to show, but I do know that it's not necessarily a linear deterioration. In other words, you have a certain pipe fitness that you started out with, plus the cement lining. And over fifty years, maybe that's supposed to be, you know, however many millimeters less. But because this is not consistent, it's not like it's just sloughing all of it off. And even in the same area, it's not sloughing all of it off. It's, you know, here's a pitted area where it's decided to penetrate. And they did put at the time what they considered, again, at Route one forty at least, we're off the travel way. But it is designed for H twenty highway loading, even though it's the right of way. You know, because of the depth and the material construction, et cetera. To, to say, okay, this is the pipeline, it'll handle the loads, et cetera. If, I would be the first one to say, if this were at junctions, joints, well, the joints or something, then I would look at it and say, oh, it's travel, it's shifting. It's many earthquakes that we're having, this is not. This is in the body of the pipe where it's actually perforating, it's very sporadic. Which is what makes it so difficult to forecast or to plan is because we don't know how far. We're hoping that the test pitting will help also inform these decisions, but it's only in five spots. First off, we're not Guilford, okay? Belmont is not Guilford. Our soil conditions may not be the same as Guilford. And the first thing that any engineer should have done, because I've done enough construction, owned a water and sewer company, as Rainey knows. Test pits were your first thing that ever should have happened before you come back to our residents who, we're in the second year of no budget, no past budget. And now you're telling us that you want our sewer people to pay for a ten. And it's not nine million, it's nine point, it's going to be ten million dollar project and you haven't even done a test pit. So now our sewer people, because the first thing you would have ever should have done was test pits. And now our sewer users are paying to do your job or your engineer's job at our personal expense, which never should have happened, okay? I find this. Couple of questions, a concrete block gets in your system? I thought you had an enclosed system. A concrete block gets in it?
Kids actually, especially along like the trails and everything, they actually like to throw stuff. They pop a manhole and throw cobblestones, bricks, we've had two by fours, yeah.
And just about your budget, what if your nine million dollar, now you're two, obviously you're eighteen million. Nine million is, I would assume, you know, your typical expenses. The other nine million is for improvements or upgrades or whatever.
Two different years.
That's, oh, this is okay.
Yeah, it's one is the first year, one is the second.
So what happens if one of them doesn't pass? Do we then lay people off or do we not do projects or we don't? Because that's what's happening in our town, we're not able to do projects, we're having to delay them. And that to me is a little, bothers me a little bit. What are you doing to secure grants to help our sewer users in having to pay for this ten million dollars? Shouldn't be on our back. You're throwing this down our throat that it has to happen. Who's, who's funding the grants for us? Because our residents can't afford ten million dollars. How many sewer people do we have? I know we've talked about this in the past. Fourteen hundred? So you're asking fourteen hundred people in this town to pay for a ten million dollar project? How much of this is going to be granted?
We have tried the last three cycles for getting clean water S R F loans with principal forgiveness. To date, we have not been ranked high enough in this last round that is just now being prioritized. We put in this project again. Again, it's competitive ranking across the whole state. We are treated just like any other utility, we don't meet the criteria, we don't get that funding. We have been working with Alicia and trying to secure rural development money. As a state agency, we cannot do that directly, but we have been facilitating both the meetings and
As a state agency, we cannot do that directly, but we have been facilitating both the meetings and anything that they asked for, like engineering things or information, you know, that was.
So at this point, you're asking the residents to pay for 10 million dollar project, okay?
My guess, what is it that is not ranking as high enough for the clear water grants? Like, what is the?
Well, part of it, they, they have a bunch of ranking criteria. There's um, affordability. Uh, that's one of the things, not money. Um, the ones, because now especially with the federal funding being pretty much slashed, we may, they, that program may not have as much money. But um, a lot of the facilities that are ranking for that have things like uh, EPA administrative orders against them. In other words, they're discharging from their wastewater treatment plant stuff they shouldn't be discharging. And so those are the priorities because they are known violations, impacts to the environment. Um, so you know, those treatment facilities, a lot of times eat up the millions of dollars that, that go uh, to that. We have been able to secure smaller money like the planning grants, those are 100% principal forgiveness, but uh, again, our project ranking at the 10 million dollars uh, as opposed to, I don't know, Rainey may be more familiar with some of the ones that are ranking, you know, rebuilding the Portsmouth wastewater treatment plant or something where it's you know, that's, suddenly that's 30, 50 million dollars. Suddenly several large projects, not that this isn't large to you, and I agree, it's large to you, but when you've got a 50, it's a million dollar project and you've got three or four of those, it quickly eats up that state funding.
Well, I think the other thing is, is and I think we all know that federal funds are going away, okay? And so subsequently, what I feel like is the federal monies aren't there, so we're just gonna ask the users to pay for it, okay? Um, I, I I mean, and again, I'm back to the test pit. That just, for now, we have to pay. Our users have to pay for the test pits, okay, which we can only afford so much to be done. And it's something that should have happened. You know, any engineer can sit in his office and look at the, the, the maps, the soil conditions of this or the that. Done enough construction in my lifetime and know that they don't have a magic ball and they don't know all the answers. And the only way they're gonna find out if those soil conditions, because a good portion of that line that goes cross-country is how I would say above the, because it was built above the muck, so to speak, or, or the water table, okay? And so in my brain, I'm thinking all of that cross-country line, all right, is probably fine, but you don't really know that. Because nothing's been looked at, it has not been investigated, okay? 140, I can understand, all right? And again, I know watch the repairs, watch the stuff being pumped out into the swamp, okay, with the state people standing right there. God forbid if any local contractor did that, we'd be in jail, okay? Watch some of those repairs happening, but yet nobody really looked at the full line. And I agree with John, 140 is doing this. It's like a sponge.
Stand beside the road, you feel it, it's, it's on gel, these big trucks. The gravel that they're all out of there, the asphalt plants, it's, it's a cross-country highway, truly is. I don't, I agree on something, Lucas, it's gonna, it's gonna be a easier, better way than just standing there and say, oh yeah, need to give you place.
And again, I agree the same way. Right in the area where the leaks were, where the, where we've had four, three, four, five leaks, whatever, okay? And I, I understand how it works. When you go in to repair a leak with duct iron, duct pile iron, right? You're shaking that line back. So I'm not surprised that there haven't, there was a couple more leaks in that area. It was from repairing probably the first leak, then it affects further down. That's what I'm thinking.
I know, that's not correct.
Oh.
Ductile iron is known to be a pit that's been used for 50 years. Young, this is not the only pipeline in the state that's had this issue. There's experience looking at ductile iron after 40 or 50 years. It was always thought, I was around the early days when the facilities were built, ductile iron was what was used. There was the, there was no other option really, other than ductile. So when you get into ductile iron, it hits. There's a hundred wastewater treatment facilities in the state that are spending millions to replace their ductile iron pipe. It's reality. It perforates and it goes away. So albeit you're talking about your argument about test pitting, I think that makes sense in some situations, but it also makes sense when we look at the overall soil criteria that looks at it. What we've been trying to do is, is, that's why we waited back and period consultant looks at it. I believe that ductile iron, if it's in the ground 50 years, it's gonna fail. That's reality. We see it every day. This isn't just the Belmont world, this is the whole state's world. Ductile iron is fair. Portsmouth spent 110 million dollars to do, upgrade their plant, replace all their ductile iron. Exodus spent 50 million dollars on one fell shoot to replace. This isn't unique. We know what's happening to ductile iron pipe. And if we get a breach, like a cross-country pipe, and it taints the wells that are up there, the public wells, then that's a whole nother issue and it becomes a liability. Now who's gonna put that? How are they gonna recharge it? So being conservative at best, when we looked at this whole process, we're putting in how it designed. And that's why I think at the end of the day, we know realistically how ductile iron works. If it's breached on 140, it's a matter of time where it's gonna go and the rest of that pipeline. So initially, that's why that 9.1 million came out. You folks in Belmont wanted to do a, another evaluation, which we said, fine, we're gonna hold. And if it comes out to the fact that there's enough comfort that in fact it can be phased, then we look at phasing there. And when you look at, you're talking about your user rates. When you think about, and we've been saying this to a lot of municipal entities. And where's your, where's your contingency fund? Where's money been put aside for the project planning? People live month to month, year to year. We know how the budget works. I have to deal with the same same thought process when they're doing the state, but people don't look beyond. So we understand the cost of them. And it's not like saying we don't give a damn. We do. And if we think that it makes logical sense to phase that, albeit we know that three, four, or five years down the road, if there's another problem, it's gonna add a lot of money to a project in its entirety. So we're going in this very open minded to see what happens, see what comes out of this extra analysis, if you will, that we're talking about, looking at test pit. But I can tell you, I've been around a long time. Every public system in the state has had to replace ductile iron. It was thought in my younger years that that was the end all be all. Ductile iron was the prime to prime at that point in time. And it was supposed to last for 80 years. When this stuff went in the ground in the seventies, the con- the conversations and the design engineers, it was 80 year lifespan. Well, nobody ever thought about high, how highly corrosive soils are, especially in New Hampshire, we have a lot of highly corrosive soils. So looking at being conservative and thinking about, you know, re- igniting more contract money, more people come in, does it make sense to do the big project? On its surface, yeah. But if it's because of the cost, you know, when you think about what, what your users are paying for wasting.
Remember, they're gonna, a good example. Right now, you're looking at a 10 million dollar project, so their rates are gonna go high. And it's probably, I'm thinking for a 30, 35 year, um, payback, I'm not sure. I think it was 35 maybe, or it hadn't been determined.
Depends on if it's rural development, if it's, if it's capital, if, if it's our capital budget and we have to bond it, that the state, it's up to the state to bond it. Normally maybe bond something like this, it's part of their overarching. It's not individually bonded in the state, it's part of the state bond. So we may be able to, you know, bond 90 bill, 90 million dollars and our project is part of it.
Does that fit 30 years?
It's whatever the state says it is. It could be 20.
Okay, so here's a good example. So 20 years, let's just take 20 years, worst case scenario. Now, they're paying high rates and five years from now, we have our sewer pump stations start which we've, I'm, I know we've redone some of them, but not all of them. And we start having to add that and add that and add that. It's just, it's, it's.
No, I get it. I get it. And I, and I don't think we're blind to that issue.
I mean, it, it, it does.
To be candid, I will tell you that whatever these rates are, and I haven't done the math, so I can't tell you what that includes. But I, I will also tell you that what you're looking at in the monthly rate now of 23 dollars is a deal.
Yeah.
Everybody else, everybody else in the state is in that 60, 70, 80 dollars a month. We get it. We understand a lot of the communities, smaller ones even than Belmont. Money's an issue. It is in every debt.
Yeah.
So I can assure you that we're trying to look at this as conservatively as we can to try and minimize the cost, but try and do the right thing. So five years down the road, we haven't added another one or two million dollars to a project because we were all a conservative at the beginning. So that's all being taken into consideration. When we see the results of what looks, this looks like in cross-country, then I think we can all sit down and have a conversation about what makes sense. Everybody goes in with their eyes wide open, that keep in mind that if this breach happens five years down the road, you need to be aware that there's gonna be an additional cost because we took the conservative approach.
Well, and it's like the other problem, there's some of our contingency monies that we're trying to um,
Yep.
say, is now gonna be used because we gotta pay for test pits that I don't think is our expense. It should not have, we should not have borne that expense of having to hire another engineering firm to go in and do test pits. That to me should have been something that any engineer should have.
And I guess we can agree to disagree on that, because looking at the soil profiles, there's probably no doubt in my mind that conservatively, that's gonna be a risk going down the street. It was Belmont's choice. They wanted to go to the next level. We said, fine, we're gonna hold back on this project for the whole 200, two and a half mile pipe. Do your evaluation, we wanna have Underwood look at it, all right? We're gonna stop, get it done. And then maybe we have a little more information other than the soil maps and our experience of what we've seen in the other hundred systems throughout the state, Dackel. And then we sit down, we have a conversation about, okay, this is the results, this is what we saw. And even then, that's not a big cross-section of that whole pipeline.
No, no.
Our biggest concern is the wetlands and the color flows that are there. We have a real concern about that. If there's gonna be liability issues, if the town water system goes in failure because there was contamination. So there's a lot of things that come and get factored into this, but I believe we're saying, okay, let's step back a little bit, we'll get a little more information. We can all sit down and have another conversation about what everybody thinks makes sense. And my ultimate goal here is that the end of the day, not only from our perspective, but the towns and the whole, whole systems perspective, is that we understand what we do today, what's the potential for the fall, just so everybody goes in with their eyes wide open. So we're not sitting in a meeting two and a half years from now saying, no, what, what's going on here? Now it's gonna cost us a lot more money. And that's reality. So trying to be cautious and do what we think makes the most sense in the long term. So.
Um, Brad, Ryan, any questions?
I think.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So, oh, actually, statements and questions. The whole thing about the east test pitting for us is, I think it's more or less so we can justify this also to our taxpayers if they have questions about it.
I get it.
To them, we're just, we're just being fooled by the state that we have to pay 10 million dollars if we don't, we can't justify it, aren't.
No, I, I.
On this real quick, what does the orange and the green differentiate on soil?
Uh, on that particular one, is that, okay, that is, okay, that is soil. There are high, medium, low risk uh, areas. So the um, in this particular um, actually, if you go back a couple of slides, I think the, I think it's more detailed, but we're actual soil, one by itself. One more. Uh, yeah, that's wetlands and maybe I didn't do just the soils, but there are, if you've ever talked to a soil scientist, there are about 4,000 different soil names. And in this particular case, the engineer ranked them as either uh, no information, uh, low risk or uh, high risk uh, soils. So when you look at the orange areas in this are the, what they call hydro acidic suspect soils. And you'll see that they largely overlap the wetlands, wetlands, and those areas are hotbeds of really lucky stuff and they're very, tend to be very corrosive. So in this particular case, the orange areas are the higher risk, the green areas are the lower risk and um, the blue areas was no information on that particular soil area. So that's why when you look at these soil maps, you know, they're not trying to do everything, they concentrated on this. So so the key is actually up at the top on that. Um, but they actually boot the different soils based upon the rankings. So instead of, the first one they gave, it was like 40 different colors, so it's impossible to see. So I said, boot them in the, the ranking ranges. Uh, they certainly have that, but it was just, I couldn't, you know, I was trying to get my sharpie out to figure out which were the high and which were the low, so they consolidated into this graph.
And then as it comes to the financial, I imagine part of this project, if we do end up having to do the whole thing at once, uh, is it you guys that will figure out the bonding method or is it all us to figure out which meant bond with whether it's state or rural code?
Again, if rural development is able to come up with some loans and grants, that would go through you and then we would in effect be almost like a subcontractor or partner, which, which is sort of the way almost you work with an engineer. We would uh, we would do the contracting, we would do all that, the engineering and everything. And, and that was at least the last I heard from rural development when we talked to them is because we're not eligible as a state agency, the applications and everything have to go through a municipality. But we can be what's called, I think they call it like a partner or something, where we can do all the construction, the design, the engineering, this sort of thing. You know, facilitate that, get them all the documentation they need, you know, the reports and the, you know, uh, dispersment requests, all that stuff.
But you know, this is another, this is, you know, I, I sit here, because I know what the grant process is like and it's not easy. And you know, we don't have a grant writer. I mean, ask our police department, ask our fire department. They, I mean, not that, not that they can't do it, but it's lots of hours, lots of whatever. We don't, we don't have the resources, but you're.
No, you know, we are, we are saying, yes, the final application will have to come from the town. But we are willing to put whatever application together with our engineer to do that. But it has to be, that signature on it in the submittable has to be from a town. So some of the information was provided for last goodness, year and a half to rural development. They've had a bunch, bunch of changes with personnel and as to, but they have said at least so far that this is an eligible project through them to get the application in the queue so that it can hopefully get some federal funding because that really is the best funding for you guys is because one, we don't know if the clean water SRF will rank you and normally we only are eligible for 10% off. And the rural development are much more grant oriented. It's never 100% of it. A lot of times it's 30, 70 or 40, 60, you know, it depends on how it shakes out. You know, if, if they're primarily at their um, both demographic and financial criteria. And that's the piece that we don't have, you know, so you would have to provide them with, yes, this is the rate base and this is the budget. You know, we don't have your municipal financial information, but from the standpoint of anything's But from the standpoint of anything technical or going together, brand application, we're right on board with helping you do that. And we've been, been trying to assist with that through the different changes in personnel at rural development for the last year.
I think Travis, part of your question would be, if we did go for the grant and was approved, we still have to bring that whenever we were awarded to the voters, the voters still have to approve or deny that, that, or not for that. And then from what I understand. The state would, would bond the rest if we were, weren't.
That don't happen. We had what, five million dollars lined up for a water treatment plant and got voted down. I mean, just, yeah.
Sure, you, you.
I'm kind of, I am on the sewer line. So I pay the sewer rates, obviously. I don't know where you got twenty-three dollars a month, but I would be thrilled if my sewer bill was twenty-three dollars a month because it's not. I live on Silver Lake and I believe that my sewer line doesn't go this way. It goes to their, in the right. So not only do we only have thirteen hundred people or so that have to pay the rates on the sewer line, you have a large chunk of that population that doesn't use the sewer line. And is it my understanding that we have to pay from the whole thing from the south room pumping station all the way down to Granite State Credit Union where it stops? So we have to pay the whole thing.
Right, because. Why? Because the only people that use that pump station and force name are in Belmont. There's a gravity sewer that comes back. But that's also Belmont. The only other, the, the only other people that use that, because we don't allow connections in more to force names, you connect gravity. It's in other words with the land holes and everything. So it's a different sewer line. That's a gravity line. There is a gravity line that co-locates along a, a part of our, of our force name. We're only talking the pressure line that goes out toward Tilden. And, um, so that's the line we're talking about.
So the, the factory, the, the cell is, that X, UPS.
They all, they're all on the gravity line coming back to, uh, Belmont Pump Station.
So but if it's right there, then why can't we?
Actually, yeah, we have something else. Yeah, you can't. In other words, you know, here you have this really high pressure line, think of it as you're not going to put a straw in it.
I'm already, I pay, if the average user is paying twenty-three dollars a month, I pay twice that. So, and so now you're telling me, okay, we're going to, we're going to force you to do this. We're going to send you a vote for this. It has to be paid for by you. And I will technically use it.
Uh, but that's up to you as a municipality. And, and I understand that a lot of times sewer users are the ones that pay only the sewer business. And so how many residents do you have that actually benefit from the fact that you've got sewer lines from this part of your municipality? You know, or. Well, but I mean, if you go for a total, everybody in town like you would when you're buying a fire truck or something like that, you know, funding your schools or whatever. I know that the history back when, and I gave you back at the inception of the program, it was ninety-five percent bed, five percent state, five percent municipal. That five percent from the municipality wasn't just from the future sewer users. It was, you know, municipal bond, everybody paid, right? That lived in that community. Again, your community, your rules, but that would at least spread out the pain of doing these kinds of things. Um, you know, I call it sort of the postal service things, you know, everybody pays the same for the stamp or postage. You know, and, you know, pay for the municipal offices and pay for the schools and pay for the fire trucks. You know, I can understand sewer users, yes. If it's the operation and maintenance and yes, it's slow and you're the one flushing. Yeah, I'm the one paying.
And I was watching a thing in, in Belmont, okay, we have no budget. This is our second year. And we had a, um, we had, um, brought to the voters for a, um, water treatment plan.
For us, it's, um, we, that's probably the only way we're going to get anything done.
Well, I can just tell you that we're looking at this cautiously. And it's not, you know, slam bam, we're going nine point one and we're going to move on. So there's, there is more thought being put in. We'll, we'll see what comes out of it. And then we can all get together and have a conversation about where we want to go, what's the outcome, whatever option is chosen. Everybody, again, to reiterate, needs to go in with eyes wide open and understand, you know, is this going to be short-term? Is it an issue two years down the road? And I think that's a, an appropriate conversation to have amongst all parties. Um, and I can only assure you that that'll take place. And I understand the concerns. You know.
Well, we just have to do everything in our power. So when people ask us the questions like, why, why is this?
Yeah, yeah.
Why do we have to do this? We're going to have to answer these people.
Yes.
I don't know about your phone, but my phone at the heavy garage.
I would gladly, I would gladly share my home.
Hey, 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 everybody, this is Keith Pratt.
Again.
I, I don't know if you guys can hear me, but I just maybe wanted to speak just quickly, um, on behalf of the town is, I got kicked off for some reason, but.
Our town right here, we're installing a new generator and they forgot we were having a meeting apparently. So we're all running out.
All right. And I may have to jump off too, and I, I've been listening obviously, but I just wanted to, to, um, maybe focus a little bit on what we're doing so that people understand what the, what the deliverables be at the end of this. So when we speak about the, uh, about the, uh, I'm sorry, my name is Keith Pratt. I'm president of Underwood Engineers and, uh, we are under contract with the town of Belmont to do the test pits. Um, and I, I just wanted to speak about the test pits a little bit and I'm not sure if you can see me or not, but I guess you can hear me. Um, because it's not just test pits and, um, like, like, um, we were talking earlier about the Guilford experiences, technology's changed a lot about how we look at these. We, so we have Busby Construction who, who is under contractor, who will be involved with doing the test pits. And the, the, they've been involved with the repairs that exist, uh, that occurred on the breaks to date. So they're familiar with the pipe. Um, they're familiar getting in there. So they, they were the appropriate guys to help us get to the pipe. When they open up the pipe, they're going to get a trench box in there, we're going to get down there and they're going to open up the pipe three hundred and sixty degrees. So we can look at it um, on the bottom, the invert, the top, all, all, all sides of the pipe. Um, we've also contracted with Corrosion Probe and I know Rainey mentioned Portsmouth and some of the ductile iron pipe and corrosion issues they've had. Corrosion Probe was involved with that work too. So this is what they do. They specialize in, in, in looking at corrosion of these, of, of this type of material. It's, um, it's, it's all they focus on. And, and when, when they get in, um, it's not just a visual observation. There is going to be, and I'll just run through their scope to give you an idea of what they're doing. But there'll be potential measurements using refer, reference electrodes. So they're looking for the corrosivity of the soil conditions. They're going to sample the soils for corrosivity. They're going to do a pit depth measurements on, on the pipe. They are going to do ultrasonic thickness measurements on the pipe wall, um, around the entire circumference, three hundred and sixty degrees. And we're going to do, um, groundwater sampling, soil sampling, sampling. There's going to be some uh, X-ray spectroscopy on the corrodes themselves to look for chlorides and sulfides, some of the things that cause the corrosion. They're going to do some groundwater sampling. And at the end, they're going to, they're going to make some opinions as to what they think the remaining useful life of the pipe is or isn't. And I think it's, it's fair, um, Underwood's not going in this thinking that we're going to be able to, um, not have to do some of this. I think the idea here is, is maybe there's an opportunity to, um, uh, maximize the useful life or any remaining useful life of the pipe. And I, and I've also heard, I think this allows the town and others to really say, you know what, we did our due diligence. If we have to do this, we have to do it. But at least now we can point to some, um, you know, actual data on the work. So this is all going to happen on the twenty-ninth and the thirtieth of July, if all goes well. Um, things are lined up. We're, we're coordinated with DOT, Busby, the town with, with Sharon and her staff. Um, and so, uh, when we sit down for that next meeting that Rainey talks about, um, we hope to have this, this information in, in hand. So I just wanted to make sure people knew it wasn't just a test pit, looking at the pipe, taking a photo of it. We're actually going to be, you know, have some real data in hand.
Hey.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Right. Yeah, can you do me a favor and send me the breadth of that scope you just talked about?
Sure.
I'd be.
Yeah, it's, assuming it's okay with the town, I'll share it with you. And they have no objections with that, but yep.
Oh, I'm sure they'd be willing to like to share. I did, it sounds like that's a lot broader scope than I thought. So I'd be interested to see some of that. It sounds, uh, sounds interesting. I thought.
Well, we're, we're frankly hoping that it, it can maybe set some precedent. I mean, as Sharon mentioned earlier, there's a lot of pipe in the basin. And I think it's our, our job maybe to make sure that we're maximizing the useful life of it. This may be a standard going forward. Um, their, their piece of it, um, for eight test pits is about twenty grand, just to give you an idea of their, their portion. Um, that doesn't include the, you know, the additional engineering we're doing and Busby's work, but, you know, they, they were able to, so what's that, uh, you know, a few thousand dollars a test pit?
Yeah, I guess what I'm really interested in is what do you expect the word part to be? You know, what conclusions can be drawn by what is the breadth of the scope?
Yeah, and, and we specifically asked Corrosion Probe to render an opinion based on the data that they collect. Is there any useful life in sections of the pipe? And they're going to provide that opinion. That'll be part of our assessment. And one more point on what we're doing is we are test pitting and we're doing this same testing on the pipe sections we know are bad. We know need to be replaced. There's pipes we know needs to, needs to be replaced. You've got five breaks right there. We're going to be in that area. So we're going to be able to compare what we know is, is troubled pipe to maybe what pipe above the water table and in non-corrosive soils might look like. So I don't, so these will be, you know, very informative information if it goes as planned to help make decisions, um, to, to maximize the useful life and hopefully uh, defer some of the work. But I, I do want to say, you know, your points were taken, Rainey, you know, we're, we just think this was the, the smart thing to do going into this, given the size of the project. But it may be that they're going to say, you know what, the original approach is right, replace it all. But without doing this, we just don't know. And maybe we'll get, maybe we'll find that a lot of the main is not in a corrosive soil environment. There's still forty years of life left. So that's what we'll find out.
I'm good.
Thank you.
I have to jump unless there's any other questions, um, for me. I have it on eleven, eleven thirty, but, um.
Don't be worried. No, we're all set. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. Bye-bye.
I will be at a rate again. We shouldn't have. That's my two cents.
What?
For what?
For? There you go.
Any other questions? Maybe other board? No? We'll wait and hear what our engineer has.
Yeah, that, that scope is a lot broader than I, or, so that's, that's good to hear.
All right, thank you.
You don't talk a lot of the time lately.
I promise, no problem. But don't talk about that.
Oh, I don't know.
All right. How, how many people on this board back?
Thank you.
Okay, done. All right.
You got it.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Yes, thank you. Um, our next item of business is cemetery trustees, Purple Heart sign contribution request. Hey, Valerie, how are you?
Good, how's it going?
Good, thank you. What is this exactly?
Uh, so earlier this year, sometime last year, we approached you guys about, um, proclaiming Belmont as a Purple Heart community to celebrate our Purple Heart. Yeah, um, and the process is well underway and you have the signs order, our posts are actually ready for the signs. I got that email yesterday. So basically they're looking for help funding the signs. Um, the total for eight signs. So we're going to have once, uh, two signs on one forty, two on one oh seven, two on one oh six and two on three. So eight signs total that will all say Purple Heart. That will all say purple heart community Belmont Hampshire on them. Um, and basically the total cost for all eight signs that sign is and post is one thousand one hundred eleven dollars and four cents or fifteen dollars and four cents. So we were kinda hoping that the town might be willing to help us purchase those.
You've done it anywhere else trying to get contribution?
Uh, yes, the veterans did say that they were going to contribute some money, but their meeting's not till September, so we're trying to work with them right now. They did say that they would contribute. And the cemetery trustees plans cover what's left.
I actually spoke to um, Glenn Jester yesterday. Um, cuz he reached out to building and them and they are willing to pay. I think it was, it was three signs of one third of the total though, was one of those two, I thought which one.
So I have the total for each sign would be one thirty-nine, thirty-eight, so you could consider maybe purchasing three signs and then see what the legion might wanna donate. We do have money in the beautification fund um, to purchase those through that if you wish. And this was brought up on five one of twenty-four, um, that they brought this discussion up to you guys.
I remember. Um. What's the?
So do you wanna tell them about the proclamation then?
Oh, so August seventh is National Purple Heart. Um, we do need to have a proclamation from you guys to proclaim Belmont as a purple heart community. And I've been speaking with Alicia and I guess um, the idea is that you guys could do that at your August sixth daytime meeting there, um, purple heart organization is um, recommended that we invite media, the veterans, other dignitaries to for the proclamation and the signing of the proclamation. Some facts to plan.
John, you're a veteran.
Yes, I am.
Thank you for your service.
I wanna sign.
I wanna sign.
I want, I want to sign, go with it. I added another one to the list.
And these signs wouldn't have names, they would just say Belmont Hampshire Purple Heart Community, correct?
They are different, the Purple Heart Trail, Purple Heart Trail is we would need permission from a living purple heart recipient to put their name on the sign and dedicate the trail to them, the purple heart community. They can be living, they can be seen up in the.
Yeah, so we would really like to have a trail designation and we were told that we have a road that can be, so anyone knows a purple heart recipient that is alive, that would like that honor, please reach out and we can get that to you there.
So, I guess the question is, we don't really know what okay, here's, here's my question. If we were to propose take this out of the beautification um, and just pay for it and then the um, veterans contribute, would we put that those monies back in the beautification?
I would think it would be more better if you just said, well, we'll purchase three or four or five, just set a number that you like to contribute and then add, then they would ask the legion and then they will pick up the rest. The cemetery trustees will pick up the remainder.
Okay, alright.
So four times one thirty-nine point three eight equals five five seven fifty-two.
Got a motion?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So I do have a motion in your packet. If you want. So it was five, five hundred and fifty-seven and fifty-two cents. And that's for four cents.
Yeah, it includes contribution of five hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty-two cents for the purchase of four of our three signs. Funds to come from beautification by the plan.
I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, in opposition, carry on.
After saying.
Oh, okay, and um, more of this year, August, so August sixth, I will be here. Thank you all so much.
And then I just a general consensus that you would like to move forward with the proclamation of August seventh as Purple Heart Day, okay? And we'll do that presentation at your August sixth meeting.
So we don't know if we'll have, when the signs are coming in, she's supposed to have that information today, but I just learned yesterday that we have to go through this stage to get sign permits, but then I would, if town will do very big study for you best. So I'm kidding, I got a couple back connection and I'm waiting for a call back.
Alright, thanks everybody, however, thank you, how good, yeah. Um, okay, our next thing is a noise ordinance sanctuary request, you know, thirty-eight Sergeant Street, August thirtieth.
Uh, yes. I was approached by the police chief who was approached by the resident at thirty-eight Sergeant Street that they are having a wedding reception and they would like to come forward to the Board of Selectmen to go beyond the noise ordinance of ten P M and the resident is here and I'll let him plead his case.
So is this a townwide party or? Are we all fine or?
Can you just state your name and address?
Thirty-eight Sergeant Street, my daughter's getting married, if I could sell things to the person.
It's probably.
Two that were here earlier.
For the cost, right?
Yeah, so my daughter's getting married, uh, uh, but the real short end of it is wedding that is our through the roof of this, they can fasten so, and the amount of restrictions that they replaced on her ceremony were crazy and soon. So um, she asked me to at our house, which I thought was going to be
simple.
But I've been working for about a year and a half and turned that back, or that was the town's choice, can't shut it.
Yeah, fence looks nice.
Thank you, thank you. So uh, we are simply trying to have a, a reception there, reception will be from four to eleven thirty essentially. Um, the reason it's so long is she's getting married at Loudon Bridge, so there's um, two hours worth of phone, so all the stuff to go, so it's a middle of way, you understand that? Uh, um, so that's what we're looking for, we're just simply looking to see that we can have uh, music go a little longer, things in the night, an hour and a half, we will uh, that whole party break up. We are talking to the school board right now, uh, the S A U to look at parking up there, so they're gonna give it the five counts now. We may have one or two vehicles, or three or four in the park that maybe has any have access volume and stuff, so so they don't have to come down to school. Uh, but all we're looking for is, is the music ordinance, we are actually pointing it up toward the, well, one oh six instead of down toward, and with the addition of the fence, I believe it will also reduce of the noise factor coming to the town. Uh, I will go around twenty days before, I'll hand out flyers letting me people over to Village Now with that my daughter's getting married, go have a party and it's a Saturday night.
Get your fancy shoes on.
I guess, yeah, I, I thought I saw our dead, as long as it's not fast, I, I think it's gonna be okay.
Should I go?
Do you need anything in writing or?
I have a formal motion for them.
I think the motion to level one, have an exception, an exemption for thirty, sorry, play music for a wedding reception beyond always ordinance time and P M with the condition that they notify their neighbors who will be affected by the sound, that's a courtesy and not to exceed twelve feet, twelve feet.
If you wouldn't mind just adding the date Saturday, August thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Saturday, August thirty.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
In opposition? Congratulations, so you.
And the PD will be in, well aware so that if they do get calls, they'll come to join the party.
Yell out the door, don't care. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, additional trash request from thirty-seven, we're gonna remember.
Sure.
Um, oh, that trash, Pauline, that's your.
That's me.
Now Greg too, a lot of it.
Yeah. Um, so a written request was submitted uh, to the board for someone who was looking for an additional trash cart, which the town allows residents who qualify under our ordinance to get an additional trash cart and the cost right now is a hundred and fifty dollars per year. This particular resident is asking for an additional trash cart with no fee. And we have not to this point allowed um, anything like that previously. Uh, I don't, you know, I don't know if there's anything in the letter that might sway you or convince you. I did also want to let you know that I am, uh, I have a list going of suggestions for changes to the solid waste ordinance and part of that will be changes to the fee structure because the hundred and fifty dollars does not cover the cost of the disposal of the items that are in those cans. The hundred and fifty dollars is only a pass through to Cella. So for anybody that has an extra cart right now for recycling or garbage, everybody in town is paying those extra disposal fees. So we have some calculations from Cella for averages. Um, and the plan is, you know, at some point soon in the future, we would be proposing that the fees cover the actual costs for anyone that gets approved for an additional cart. Um, any other questions? I'll make the motions denied and request for one free additional trash can, the thirty-seventh with a road as the ordinance states, and any request for additional trash carts is a cost to the taxpayer in the amount of a hundred and fifty dollars per year. Uh, second, okay, seconds all around, all in favor? Aye, aye. Do we have any other business?
Uh, yes, I have just a few other things for you guys. For those of you that are on Facebook, um, we've had, we've seen a, quite a bit, quite a few comments in regards to having no bathrooms at the beach. I have gotten some calls, um, Danielle and Patrick have also been approached about not having any bathroom ass, access. Uh, we did close them, A, due to budget constraints and B, that people just simply abuse any bathroom we have, whether it be a porta potty or the beach bathrooms we have, whether they flush overflushed, not overflushed, but overstuffed them or put diapers down them or push the porta potty over or set the porta potty on fire. People are damaging them, so we decided to cut that from the budget, A, and also that we were in a default. But and the beach is closed, we are, it is open that we're maintaining it and keeping it clean in that aspect, but we would like to reconsider either opening the bathrooms or a porta potty, um, the beach will be closed by the end of Au- August. A porta potty is about two hundred dollars a month, so we'd be looking at probably less than five hundred dollars for the rest of the year. Um, I know.
Okay, what happens if it is destroyed? Who pays for that?
We would through our service.
We do. So I mean, I'm just asking.
And I know I have Patrick here to.
I like, I like to add to that, um, Kyle and I go up at six thirty every morning. Okay, and for the, the next hour, hour and a half, every with the beach being closed and no bathrooms open, we take an hour, hour and a half to clean up human feces everywhere. Alright, they are, they are going to the bathroom in the woods. They're going to the bathroom behind the bathhouse. Uh, they even leaving it on the beach itself. Uh, so we do have a problem there. Uh, the, the trash has not been bad, uh, we've been able to maintain that. But the human feces, we're, we're fighting that. My recommendation is to go with a porta potty for the next forty-five days till we get the labor day and, and go from there. They come once a week. I believe it's best service that we use, they come once a week, they service it. We always take a look in, in the morning if we have to sweep it out and do something. Uh, we, we do that. I do not recommend opening up the unattended bathrooms. Uh, last time we had rows there, it was over a thousand dollars. Uh, uh, when we, when the summer camp is there or there's somebody there, we can open it up, uh, but unintended is, is just asking for trouble.
Okay, so my question didn't get answered, was the fact that so we're looking at five hundred dollars. What fluffed the season and what happens if the porta potty gets turned over, tipped over, burned? Whatever, does that come on our insurance? Do we pay for that instead of fee? I'm just asking.
I don't have an answer for that, um. Danielle still here?
So, you know, I had to leave, she was on a filter.
Okay, I would assume they would probably charge us extra for a service call, especially if it was damaged.
And damage beyond usability, then how much would that end up costing them?
I mean, I understand, I, I well, I'll say it, people are just who care? I, I just, it's brutal. And I, I know it's, it's a mess. I mean, what do we do? Just?
Even when we had the bathrooms open and Sunday and I spent some time playing in that beach. It was still, it was still fertile paper and work.
I mean, we get into the point where we're gonna just have to totally close it, put rocks across, dump a lot of people there, have no, no, um, no cleaning, no nothing and just wash our hands of the
On a nor, on a normal day, uh, chairman, then there are anywhere from fifteen to twenty-five cars there.
Yeah.
And then these are not just the one person in the car, you know, there's families, everything. It looked like yesterday, when we went up the avenue to check.
Yeah.
It looked like Hampton Beach.
Yeah.
On a very, on July four.
Yeah.
That beach is rightly so, is, is well used.
Yeah.
We just have to give them the tools to make sure that we keep everybody safe, clean and give them something, someplace to go to the bathroom.
Well, we, we do, even nice bathhouse they destroy, it seems like.
It's, it's so hot because.
Try to give them something beautiful to use and they destroy it. It might not be our presence, it could be people from other towns who come and don't care for the service.
Oh, yeah, I was there with them on Sunday morning, we watched this lady come in and she took out uh, both rafts and flowy things and made bait and batter one. I said, what are you doing? And I'm looking at the Guilford, she's there on the side of a car in the wood hill. And she's, I said, pick your shit up and get out. And that way, I mean, she was calling off an area because her friends are down, out of body.
Yeah, well, yesterday happened, it was about fifty fifty, fifty New Hampshire place and fifty other state place and there were I would say over twenty, twenty-five cars there, so, uh, they, the word is definitely out there that there was
There's not an attendant.
There's not an attendant, uh, so they're going through, plus we're going through slightly. So, um, I just don't want us to get closed down because when they test the water for bacteria, if they're going in the bathroom and the water.
Danielle had said, uh, just texted that they have not charged before for extra cleaning or if it was tipped over or anything, not caught, caught on fire, I don't know if that would, you know, be an extra charge or not.
Where would we be pulling this money from?
Um, from the original line in the, from the original line in the budget. Um, we would have the, the funds.
I guess it will be, um, I, I, I read some of that comments on Facebook and a couple of people said, well, maybe, maybe it's people volunteer. But, you know, it's, um, I guess if we put it there and it gets tipped over or, or damaged, we can get it out of there. Don't, we're not gonna fix it if it's there and it gets used properly, but if it doesn't, it gets removed.
Is there any way to secure it?
I know, I was thinking that, isn't there a big scrap? Um, so, yeah, I did, I thought of it, I had it on, stayed into a tree or something, but then they gotta, then they gotta deal with that, yeah, that takes a, see, a big strap over the top, but I guess my two cents would be go the porta, porta potty. But if it's tipped over, if it's whatever, it needs to go because we attempted. And it's not from not attempting before, it just gets
Sorry, you have a dumb motion, I'm.
Can you, if something like that happens, if it gets destroyed or vandalized or knocked over or whatever, can you take a photo of that?
We take photos every
Okay.
We know, cuz we never, as we round the corner to where the beach house, the beach uh, bathrooms are, we never know what we're gonna find.
Time.
We never, so. Uh, so.
Yeah, that would be a good thing to move on.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah.
And you want to
Give us a photo and, and go post it, this is why. I mean, it, it's just, and I'm sure probably will happen, but and it's sad that he probably isn't a Belmont, a Belmont resident, but the Belmont residents of Kings are.
Yes.
So we have a lot in doing a particular, John, second, all of
Yes.
Does the motion include a certain number of days?
No, just a motion. No, just a motion to approve the rental of a porta potty at the beach, till Labor, Labor Day.
Okay.
Labor Day, we close the beach anyway.
Somewhat, well, you're done.
Legally, for legal reasons.
Sliver Day, we pull
Alright, so Travis motioned and then John seconded.
And that doesn't even Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor? Aye.
Um, the last thing I have in, uh, other new business is just letting you all know that the Fire Department is having a swearing-in ceremony for firefighter Rob Carrulo on Wednesday, July thirtieth at ten A M. And they would like to invite you, if you would like to come, they will have late refreshments.
Oh, no generator, aren't they? We, we got that.
Just to let you know that, obviously, the generators arrived, the, the pack's in, the switch is in, the tanks are here, if we're not booked up. I'm estimating two weeks before we get everything, uh, they gotta finish the wire and dig the transporter, the gas line. So, I'm, I'm optimistic by the rest of the waters.
Awesome. And so.
It's a huge generator, I don't know if the folks are.
Huge, or it's huge.
Yeah.
Huge, that's what I said, I thought it was huge.
It's a very large generator.
Very large stem. Well, this is a large building, and when it's occupied with all of, everything. Any other whole business?
I do not.
Right. Um, any public comments?
Mr. Walker, if you would like to come up at this point?
Morning.
Morning.
What can we help you with?
Well, I have the town come over, they're going on my cash, and the money, no, if I can keep my registered cash, are they taking everything?
I, I have no idea, up, up, Karen, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, I can address that.
Alright.
We did explain to you yesterday that anything that is properly registered, our stickers will remain on the property.
So, no, we're not taking anything that's registered, I guess we're only taking things that are not, not registered.
They all the tabs, and the bar, all the pots, where they're in them, be fixed, everything goes. Can I, can I at least take that, you have thirty days to get rid of all my tabs?
No, I believe you're, I believe we can go, we have a pool of Karen.
Yeah, let me address this, and I have explained this multiple times, Chairman, that the town has bike work order. We determine what's violated materials, we, it was explained multiple times, the currently registered vehicles stay, everything else, tires,
the cars, the So.
Got all my tires and so on, so too.
Yes, yes, I believe, yes, that's
Twenty-five dollars a tire, I don't have that money. So you're gonna take it and charge me, I mean, I'm three hundred something thousand dollars on the town of Belmont now, because it's trash. All because I got busted for drugs, and people think I'm a big time drug dealer. I've lost everything in my life, lost my wife, lost the houses, I've lost everything. So there's nothing left, now you just gotta take every little bit out, right?
I guess so.
I'm a big time drug dealer, yeah.
Oh, I didn't know that, but I'm sorry.
That's what I was told, that's why you fire the town. The guy that was town inspector came up last time, checked me out, said, well, I said, you have to be surprised, you shouldn't have drugs nailed to your house. Oh, that's what's behind all this, yeah, yeah, he was fired the next week, so that's all I know.
Yeah, uh, that's
Yeah.
It was a side for Now, I believe that what's happening is that it is, you're in violation of ordinances within the town, and that's why
they didn't bring whom I jumped at like three years, but they took my hundred bucks every year, and I don't get that back either, do I, Joe? So I just don't make sense, I'm done with the town. You got my house, you got my wife, you got my life, there's nothing left. And you wanna take every little bit away, now I gotta, now I gotta give all my cash. And what about the registered cards belong to people, are they up for jobs? They're taking them too?
No.
They already took two.
We just told you that we're in, Karen just reiterated that we're taking nothing that is registered.
Okay, so customers, people's cards, if they're not registered, they lost them, they don't have a chance to get them.
If they are not registered, they will be gone, correct?
Lot of registrations, free as well.
Current registration.
Yeah.
That we do not take.
Okay. The point you're claiming, that we're having to, right? Thank you.
You want, up on Mr. Walker?
Yeah.
Um, anyone else have any public comments?
Uh, Danielle responded on the porta potty, they'll be there even Friday or Monday.
Okay, alright, alright. Um, our next meeting date is scheduled for August sixth at ten o'clock. Um, do we have a non-public?
Just real quick, yes.
Okay, we have a quick non-public, ninety-one A, forty-two.